Call this August 5th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
All right, thank you, Kathy. If we could all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Need to add item 7A, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance 100810, amending the budgets of the general and economic development funds of the city of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion in second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing no discussion, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Now to the old business portion of our meeting, item 2, consider approval of the minutes of the council meeting held on July 15, 2010. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have the motion in second. Any discussion by the council? Do we have any comments from the audience? Having had a chance to review those and seen no discussion, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Now through the consent agenda, there are three items tonight. Item 3, consider awarding bids for the wireless microphone system and mower for the leisure services department. Item 4, consider awarding bid for a trencher, the gas department. And item 5, consider awarding bid for cable for the electric department, sponsor Tony Peak. So we've got those three items. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Have our motion and a second. Any items the council would like to pull off to discuss? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Now to the new business portion of our meeting. Item 6, consider authorizing the purchase and fulfilling of the agreements of the purchase of three properties in front of the rehab center on 7th Street, not to exceed $300,000 for the Cookeville Regional Medical Center, sponsor Mr. Paul Korth from CRMC.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The hospital board of trustees has approved the purchase of these properties located at 224, 228, and 232 West 7th Street for an amount to not exceed $300,000. These properties are located within the medical district and will be used for parking. On behalf of the board, we're here tonight to request that consideration for the approval of that purchase.
All right, thank you, Mr. Korth. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
I might point out that the slide says site, that's from the previous council meeting where we approved that other piece of property. The three properties just to the right of that red box are the properties we're talking about this meeting.
Do we own the, obviously, I'm assuming we own the parking lot parcel, which would be the next piece? The next two pieces that would finish the block, are those, are either one of those owned by?
Every, everything, this will finish out the block.
Okay.
Yes, this will finish out the complete block.
Okay.
That is an older map. The property to my right has already been purchased and removed. That's, there's nothing on that site right now.
I spoke with one of the residents from that, one of the three houses, not sure which, but she had been compensated for relocation expenses and that sort of thing. Have we taken care of the, I think there was a business maybe in that area and some other?
That is correct. We have paid for several items for those owners that live there, some moving expenses along with from relocation expenses that were associated.
The owners and then the separate tenants.
By the, we didn't pay the owner, I'm sorry, the tenants.
The tenants of, okay.
Yes, we paid them what their actual receipt expenses were.
Okay, good.
Very good. Any further discussion by the council? Do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comment, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Now, item, thank you, Mr. Korth. Item 7, consider resolution 100805, authorizing the participation in the Tennessee Municipal League Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program, sponsor Melinda Keever.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution is to authorize participation in this grant program. It is a 50/50 matching grant program with the total budgeted match amount, we would be required as $2,000. We have applied to purchase 10 reversing backup cameras, 5 for our public works department, and 5 for our electric department. I may recommend that you approve.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, second. Any discussion by the council? Do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Ms. Keever. Item 7A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 100810, amending the budgets of the general and economic development funds of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2011, sponsor Mr. Davidson.
Mayor, council members, if you would recall back in 2006, the city and the county partnered to purchase property to construct a business park. As part of that process, the county provided the funding for the purchase of that, and then the city would pay back hour and a half of that property purchase over a 12-year period. And the county, something we've been looking at for the last month or so, and the city manager and I have been talking about, is a way to try to pay that off. A couple of weeks ago, the county executive called us, wanting to know if there's any way that we might be able to go ahead and pay that funding back to them to get their debt service fund built back up at the county. And we're currently, that rate back then that we entered into with them was to pay a 5% interest rate to them. And looking at this, what we can do is take $1,261,504 from the general fund, fund balance, use that along with the funding we already have budgeted in our economic development fund, and make that prepayment. And the payoff, including the accrued interest on the payoff date, would be $1,463,502. And this ordinance would authorize us to use $1,261,504 from the general fund and to pay that loan off, and I would recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
Item 8, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 100609, rezoning 1100 Old Calvary Road, tax map 67-7.01, from RS20 Single Family Residential to QM Quarry and Mining, and rezoning a portion of 1805 East Spring Street, tax map 67-15, from RS20 Single Family Residential to CL, local commercial, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, the properties proposed for rezoning are depicted upon the screen. This is the general location map. Here's an aerial photograph of the properties and the current zoning. The request to rezone these properties was submitted by Don Johnson on behalf of Cookeville Limestone, the owners of the property at 1100 Old Calvary Road, and Mr. Birch McCormick, the owner of the property at 1805 East Spring Street. The property at 1100 Old Calvary Road, which is zoned as RS20, consists of approximately 70 acres and is currently used as a rock quarry. The quarry is operated as a non-conforming use. The property located at 1805 East Spring Street consists of approximately 43 acres and is primarily used for agricultural purposes. The zoning of the property is split with the eastern portion along East Spring Street consisting of approximately 16 acres zoned as CL, and the western portion, the portion proposed for rezoning, consists of approximately 27 acres, and it is zoned as RS20. As you can see on the screen, the properties are contiguous with RS20 and CL zoning to the north, with RS20 zoning to the south, with RS20 and RD, single-family and duplex residential zoning to the west, and with RS20 and CL zoning to the east. Our comprehensive future land use plan depicts these properties as being best suited for low and mixed-density residential purposes. Mr. Johnson indicates the reason for requesting the rezoning of the Old Calvary Road property to QM is to allow the operation of uses in addition to the quarry, including asphalt and concrete facilities. The purpose for rezoning the remaining portion of the property on East Spring Street to CL is to construct a street to the quarry's property. Proposal location of that street is depicted on the screen. The rezoning of the property 1100 Old Calvary Road has been considered on multiple occasions by the planning commission. A request from Cookeville Limestone to rezone 1100 Old Calvary Road from RS20 to HM, which is heavy manufacturing, was denied in March of 2006. In the 2006 request, the petitioner indicated that the purpose of the rezoning was to allow the location of a concrete production facility on the property. It was further indicated at that time that the concrete facility located in the downtown area would be relocated if the rezoning was approved. In the denial of the 2006 request, a number of concerns were identified, including that the only access to the property was through Calvary Road, which is located through an established residential area, that Calvary Road was inadequate for heavy truck traffic, and was concerned about the impact of the proposed uses on the nearby residential area, were also concerns about the proposed uses that are allowed in the HM, again, which is heavy manufacturing, and their impact on the nearby residential areas, and was concerned about the deviation from the future land use plan. Later in 2006, the planning commission unanimously approved and the council adopted new zoning provisions for a QM district. The QM Quarry Mining District was, also included additional standards for quarry and mineral extraction operations. The QM district was specifically created for quarries and related operations, including concrete products and asphalt mixing, which are the uses that are desired in the rezoning request. The QM district requires that access to the permitted uses be designed and located to minimize the danger to traffic and nuisance to adjoining property owners. In March of 2010, Cookeville Limestone submitted another request to rezone the property 1100 Old Calvary Road to HM, again, to HM Heavy Manufacturing. This request also included three additional properties on North Salem Road. It was indicated that the inclusion of the properties on North Salem Road would allow for the provision of a second means of access to the site. In the denial of the March 2010 request, the planning commission made several comments. Several of the issues in the 2006 request remained, including that Old Calvary Road would still be used as access, but they're also concerned that North Salem Road would not be adequate for heavy truck traffic, and was also concerned that this would be a larger deviation from the future land use plan. In July 2010, the rezoning request of Mr. Johnson indicated that Cookeville Limestone had acquired the right to purchase the right-of-way 60 feet in width through the property owned by Mr. McCormick located at 1805 East Spring for the purpose of constructing a new access street. A letter from Mr. Johnson to the city manager on behalf of Cookeville Limestone states the following, and is depicted upon the screen. Cookeville Limestone agrees to construct at its expense a new access street from the quarry through the McCormick property to East Spring Street at the intersection of Dry Valley Road. Cookeville Limestone agrees to pay, if necessary, for half the cost, up to $15,000 for the signalization of the intersection of the new street with East Spring Street and Dry Valley Road. Cookeville Limestone agrees to construct the new street to normal standards required by the city of Cookeville for a city street. Cookeville Limestone approves and authorizes the city of Cookeville to prohibit commercial truck traffic on Old Calvary Road if the rezoning is approved and after the new access street is completed. Cookeville Limestone understands that the city of Cookeville will not issue permits for additional uses of the Cookeville Limestone property, such as an asphalt plant, concrete plant, brick plant, et cetera, until the new access street has been completed and truck traffic on Old Calvary Road has been prohibited. Future uses of Cookeville Limestone property that are in addition to the rock quarry must comply with the QM zoning. The letter further states, however, that after the QM is approved, the rock quarry operation, because it's grandfathered in, excuse me, shall continue to operate within the boundaries of the property as it has previously operated before the change to QM zoning, without regard to compliance with the requirements of QM zoning, and that the city of Cookeville will provide a letter to Cookeville Limestone acknowledging this right. East Spring Street is a state highway, and any new access must be approved by TDOT and design and construct to TDOT standards. The petitioners have submitted a letter from TDOT indicating or specifying the standards that would have to be met in order for TDOT to approve the new access to state highway, or to Highway 70. They've indicated that a traffic study will be required for the approval of the access. The new access would have to comply with all city standards. Public Works Department has looked at this proposed access point and indicated that the site distance requirements can be met at the location of the new access street on East Spring Street. They've also indicated that a traffic signal most likely will be required. At each of the planning commission meetings, residents spoke of the negative impact of the quarry, including the effects of blasting and dust. It was noted at the meetings that the quarry had been classified by the Cookeville Building Official in 2004 as a legal non-conforming use. A legal non-conforming use is a use that legally existed prior to the adoption or amendment of a zoning code to which the use does not conform, and the use has not been discontinued for a specific length of time. In 2004, the state legislature established the discontinuance period for non-conforming uses as 30 months, or two and a half years. As a legal non-conforming use, the quarry can continue to operate, and the city's zoning regulations cannot be retroactively enforced. There are also concerns raised regarding the environmental impact, particularly for a proposed asphalt facility. Such facilities are regulated and monitored by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. State operating permits are required from TDOT's Divisions of Air Pollution and Water Pollution Control. The planning commission's recommendation is to approve the rezoning of the portion of the property at 1805 East Spring Street to CL, and to deny the rezoning of the property located at 1100 East Spring Street to QM.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
I move that we accept this motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
What's your motion to approve?
To approve it. As.
Well, is it to approve rezoning both properties, or is, the planning commission did not recommend the QM's rezoning, so?
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I mean, you're voting to approve this ordinance?
This ordinance, yes, I'm sorry.
Which includes both properties?
Both properties.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, well, I'll make the second. So now we have a motion and a second on the, a motion on the table. Do we have any discussion by the council?
Repeat again what the motion is, please. As you said it, that's what you want him to say, is that correct?
The motion is to, the motion is to approve this ordinance, which rezones both pieces of property.
Okay.
One to CL and one to QM.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
One of the questions that I have, if you could go back to that letter from Don Johnson, the second page, number six there. If they are applying for the QM zoning, why would, how can the city not require them to fall under the new zoning on the rock quarry itself?
On the rock quarry itself, and I can let Mr. Reiter speak to this to our attorney also, but I believe that as a non-conforming use, they're grandfathered in, they operated under no specific regulations for the quarry by the city at the time. They were determined to be non-conforming. That would apply to any additional uses or change in use of the property.
Well, if we go back to October of '06, the planning commission recommended a, to develop or create a QM zone, which allows related uses. Well, and the city council then agreed to approve the creation of a QM zone. So I'm assuming that when they asked for, to approve the creation of QM zone, they're speaking of this piece of property. But of course, since that time, there's been a lot of ingress, egress problems of like you can't, you know, it's just, it's too dangerous to stay on Old Calvary Road, and you've got to find another way to go in and out. And so that, I think, is what the petitioners wanted to do, and so they were, they thought of ways like using the North Salem Road, which that still was not acceptable. So with the planning commission denying the request, I'm puzzled in the fact because they, you know, four years ago, asked that it be created. So I'm puzzled as to why they asked for that, and now, and now they do not feel that it is, that is acceptable to do. So having attended those planning commission meetings, I was hoping to hear some pros and cons of why they changed their opinion, so, but I didn't hear that. Now, I think moving, moving the traffic, the truck traffic from Old Calvary Road, which is to me dangerous, moving it over to another place, which would be acceptable, is a big help to residents who live on that hillside. I mean, move, because it's moving it farther away from, from the concentrated homes that are there on the hillside. Now, because the planning commission did not talk about what uses like asphalt plants would do, then I had to do a lot of research to try to find what was an asphalt plant going to do if it were there. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I have not found anything, EPA is not saying that there's anything dangerous about an asphalt plant of today, because they're not like the asphalt plants of when I was a little girl, because they have such regulations. There's regulations, of course, with the quarry, in which they're monitored monthly, and they're having to meet certain standards. Well, the asphalt plant would have to meet certain standards. Then we've got to consider that this piece of, this huge piece of property has some homes on it, but remember, when was that quarry started? Which was in the late 30s or early 40s, so it's, it puts a big, you know, no one, none, no one up here wants to put any harm or disadvantage to anyone, but because that quarry was there in the beginning, then what shall we do? They're, they are monitored by the state, we have no control about that, so they have a right to, to perform and use that facility and use that property. So I'm, with the modern way that asphalt is produced today, and with moving the road, moving the traffic over to a more acceptable way, if, if, everything is under the big if, if TDOT approves the roads and the signalization and traffic studies, all that has to do with if, because they can't do any other related activities on that property unless they're going to, are going to meet these state standards, TDOT standards and Cookeville city street standards. So I can't, I have problems of, why would you leave it RS20 when, how many people are going to buy a piece of property to build a home in that area? So I just, I, I have to go by the facts, and of course, I, I just, I just have to go by the facts that are, that are presented to us. So I, I think that it should be a QM zone, and then the RS is on the highway.
I have a question. Is there a timeframe to build the road? Is there a stated timeframe?
No.
Okay.
The way it's proposed, proposed is that it would be before any additional use is located on the property. There's no.
So the, okay, so the rezoning for any other use would not go into effect until the road were built?
The rezoning would go into effect.
But, but for the ability for any other use, other than what's already there?
That's correct.
So that wouldn't go into effect until the road was built and completed, is that?
The standard for the additional uses would be to have the adequate access provided. And they've recognized that in the letter from their attorney.
And can you read us the, some of the uses that, or the uses that are identified in the QM?
Well, of course, the rock quarry are the main things, anything to do with the extraction of minerals, asphalt plants, concrete batch plants, block plants, the primary additional uses in that zone. It's very limited, it's a very limited zone. That's one of the difference between HM. HM is heavy manufacturing, which had a broad range of zones, and that's one of the reasons that a new zone was developed that would have more restrictive uses that would apply just to quarry areas.
Well, doesn't the QM zone, in fact, actually protect the, the site that if it were to be sold or something, that that's all that can be there then? Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
It being rezoned, right now, it's a non-conforming use under where it was.
Yes.
If it's rezoned, if it's zoned into the QM, it actually protects the site and the surrounding area, and that that is the use that will be there. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. As a non-conforming use, that's the only use that can happen on that property, other than a conforming use. And with the current zoning, is RS20 a single-family residential, it can't be changed to any other non-conforming use. Now, without it being rezoned, it has to stay quarry or single-family residential, has to be switched. It can't change to another type of use. Under the QM zone, quarry would make, quarries are allowed, but a limited number of additional uses are also allowed that aren't currently allowed as a non-conforming use.
Well, this is something that this council has dealt with since, since before I was elected for my first term. And it's a troubling situation, but on the other hand, when I look at where the quarry is, and the fact that the quarry was there a long time ago, much longer ago than most of the residents that are to the direct north of it, let me make sure I've got that right on my legend here, and I've struggled with this because a quarry is a quarry. There's not anything else it can be once you start going in to get the rock. And it existed before that, the residential houses north of it. And quite frankly, I feel like we need to get a different access road to it so that we get the heavy trucks off of that very Old Calvary Road, and then off of where most of the residents in that area come on to Spring Street. And so I definitely think that we definitely need to find a way out of the quarry, a different way. This is the solution. And like Councilwoman Davis, I've done my homework. I spent this afternoon and most of last weekend going through the internet, looking at asphalt plants, not looking at them personally, but reading about them and checking on them. And I feel that this would be monitored so strongly by the EPA that our residents would be protected. And I know that living around a quarry is not always a wonderful experience, but the quarry was there to begin with. And, you know, we all benefit from the rock that comes from that quarry in some way or another. So I'm for this new access road out, definitely.
One of the things, when we first started hearing about this, obviously, the traffic down Old Calvary Road, and the dust, and the things like that, and the blasting, and there's, there have been some complaints, and as it's been talked about, this, this rock quarry's been there for, for many years. And I guess it's really surprising to me that we would have a rock quarry in a single-family residential zone. And although that there are existing residents out there, that in the future, when people, when you look at this, the map that's on the board there now, you don't see the giant hole in the ground. You don't see the limestone that has long denuded that, that area of any grass and trees. You don't see that on this map. So if you went down to the planning office before you bought your home, and some, some of the people that came in and complained seemed very surprised by all the trucks and the blasting of that rock quarry. So if you went down to the planning office and looked at this map prior to buying or building a house down there, it's all zoned, single-family. And unless somebody told you there was a quarry there, you may or may not know it. But by zoning. But by zoning it QM today, in the future, when somebody buys or builds out that way, and they look at this map, whether they ever take the time to look on the other side of that hill, they're going to see QM. And that should raise a question to them. What is QM? And then immediately, they should know, hey, there is, with further investigation, they will find out what is in that hole over there, and what goes along with it. So, to me, this satisfies a planning from a long-term, I mean, there are impacts today, but, but from the long-term aspect of this property and this area around this property, it, it takes away all question from anybody that in the future may want to buy and/or live in that area.
It does appear that it betters the potential safety issue on Old Calvary, and also on Dry Valley, will that road intersect at Dry Valley Road? Is that the potential?
That's what, that's what they'll study. That's what TDOT's going to study that.
So, TDOT will just...
And the site distance isn't, like the big if I'm talking about.
Right, exactly.
I mean, this, nothing can change of what they're doing now unless they can get this approved and go forward. I understand it.
Sure.
And as, as Vice Mayor Davis said, there is nobody sitting up here on this panel that, that would do anything to jeopardize the, the quality of life for any, any person in that area. And, you know, if, if someone had come to us and that was still a farm as it was 100 years ago, and said, hey, we want to, we want to put in a quarry right there, and all these houses existed around it, there's no question in my mind how I would stand to protect that area from that. But the fact is, that, that area has a huge scar on the earth. And, you know, the uses that fall in that QM are restrictive. I can remember looking at that HM zoning, and it, it concerned me that if that area went out of business as a quarry, that you could have a big stamping mill, or some sort of a very loud steel presses over there popping all night long, three shifts. And that, that, that did not fit for that area. But that, that quarry is there. That's, that's, that's a truism. It is there. You can't deny it. Do we have any comments from the, from the audience, or Councilman Williams? If you could just identify yourself, and we'll give you up to three minutes to share your thoughts with us.
Members of the council, my name is Brian Paddock. I've attended the planning commission meeting, and quite frankly, I think there's maybe a misunderstanding on the council about the situation. If you vote on the motion as you presented it, you essentially are allowing an asphalt plant and other activities here. If you were to do what the planning commission did and simply rezone the CL site to allow on certain terms and conditions another access road, you're obviously adversely affecting people who may have property right adjacent to that proposed road within that site on either side, but you're not, you're not allowing any further activity for the quarry except the quarrying itself. You've already got a situation where you've got a quarry that has caused repeated complaints of nuisance from blasting and dust and so forth. And now, essentially, the council's proposing to say to the same business that has operated in a way that has been of hardship to its neighbors, why don't you undertake some more activities? Why don't you have an asphalt plant? Why don't you have a concrete plant, whatever you choose to invest in and can get permits for? I think the council has a misapprehension, because the other problem you have is, is that once you have allowed that QM zoning, which exists nowhere else in the city, you will not have a situation where you can control those nuisances. Every citizen will have to fend for themselves by litigating against dust, blasting, smells from the asphalt, the difficulties of bringing materials in and out, air pollution and so forth. And one council member mentioned that the EPA regulates it. Well, that's not quite true. It's the state air pollution control people that require a permit. But if you've ever noticed how dirty the area is, our air pollution control in, in, in Tennessee is, is lacking, and it applies to asphalt plants. What you're asking for is more years of nuisance. The other problem you have is that, is that the quarry already, as I've said, is a nuisance to its neighbors because of blasting as well as dust. Well, one of the things that you are faced with is that right now, state law says that a city cannot regulate blasting in its, within its confines, no matter what its zoning is. So, you're already put in a place where you cannot help your residents with that situation. And yet, you propose to allow, put an additional set of uses over which you will equally have no control, that they are within whatever state regulation and state enforcement the state chooses to, to do. So, I suggest that, that the current motion to change this to QM and allow these additional uses is, is a mistake, that if the concern is simply that there be another route of access, that the planning commission's suggestion that at least a portion of this area be rezoned CL to allow that construction to take place, that that would be appropriate. The final point I would make is that the letter that you have is very strange. First of all, if an ordinance goes into effect, it's not clear to me how you enforce a letter that makes a bunch of promises about what will be done once somebody gets it. It's like saying to somebody, well, here's your driver's license, and we have your promise you're never going to drive drunk. Well, you know how that gets enforced. It gets enforced after something goes wrong. And here you have a letter that on the very end says, and notwithstanding your zoning law, you'll give us a letter that promises you won't try to control us under your zoning law. Like, excuse me, since when can I get a letter that says I'll get new zoning, and by the way, I can ignore whatever the zoning statute says are the limitations?
All right.
Read paragraph five and ask Mr. Rader if he's opinion about how the city can write a letter that's demanded as a condition of this zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Paddock.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mills, could we put the letter back up, please? My name is Chuck Johnson. I have the garden center at 1717 East Spring. There were several things mentioned about ifs, and that's what my question is, because the letter states that, about the road and before the construction and everything, I want the city council to be on record saying that the road must be built before the asphalt plant and the concrete plant can be open and operational.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I, I think, I'm not, this, this letter is not the ordinance that we're passing. I mean, this was a letter. We get a lot of letters. I'm not agreeing to, I'm not saying that in our, we've not designed, from my opinion, I'm not agreeing to everything that's in that letter, and I'm not voting on an ordinance based upon what they've said in that letter. That, that does not become official of...
So, they're not obligated to honor the letter. You are not.
They're obligated to, to honor our codes and our, in our zoning. And when we have expansion in a, in a zone, we require them to have adequate access to that.
Two accesses are adequate, just large enough for the trucks. One access...
Well, I don't design the roads. I mean, maybe we can get Greg or James to...
But I mean, just large enough to, for the trucks.
I know in other zones that we've done, like out off of Fisk Road, where we had a cul-de-sac for, you know, a heavy, be light manufacturing, I think it was out there. They had to do extra thick asphalt. It had to be so wide. You know, it's designed, it would be different than the access that you would probably have to have for your business, because you're not bringing heavy trucks.
What he's saying in the letter, you know, sounds good to me in, in the sense of the traffic would be relieved off my property and go to someone else. But what you're saying is that that is not part of the motion, it's part, not part of the contract or anything, that once it's zoned QM, they, they have to have an adequate entrance and exit, and Old Calvary is not adequate. That's what we have already said.
Mr. Mills, could you address the concern on the, what we have in our zones that, that would require, as the uses change in that area, what would require them to modify their ingress and egress out of the zone there?
Well, we, what we've stated is that we will not issue permits for any additional uses at that site until a new street is built to the standards required by the city. They've submitted the letter acknowledging that they understand that that's what we're going to require. Now, whether we could get sued at some point in time, be forced to do something different, you know, I'll let our attorney speak to that. But that's what we've stated, that the codes department will not issue permits for any additional uses until, our zoning code for the QM specifically states that you must have adequate access, and that can access that's been determined would require a new street. At a minimum, and Greg can speak to this, the street would be constructed at minor collector status, which would be a 24-foot width with the extra pavement thickness for heavy trucks, turning lanes at the intersection, all that had to be designed. Also, the new construct, new street construction would require the approval of plans by the public works department and the submitter of those, the design to the planning commission for their approval, for it to be accepted as a street.
So, that goes back to my original comment or question early on, in that the, the actual uses on the site would not change until another access, i.e. the road that we're talking about is built.
That's the intention, yes, yes.
And we have, we have a permit process, I'm asking. We have a permit process that would keep them, that would keep them from adding those...
There, there's a licensing requirement, and there's also building permit requirements, business license to operate a new business, or license to operate, or building permits to erect new structures.
If you've just come and identify yourself, we'll give you up to three minutes, or a little over if you need it.
I'm Ms. David Judd, and we live southwest of the quarry. Our farm joins the quarry property, and we're downhill from it. With the asphalt and everything, the oil from their equipment, whatever, it's going to run downhill. There's cattle running on our farm. There's a pond. What are they going to do to keep this runoff from that quarry? What are they going to put around it? A barrier for the site? It's supposed to be blocked from all surrounding properties with not a cinder block, brick, and so many feet deep, so high. And then you've talked about when you came over to the house that they, Mayor Sam Sale, when you came to our house, you made the statement that they were grandfathered in, they could not go any bigger, they could only go deep. You recall saying that?
I don't remember that, no, but...
Well, you said it. And I have a picture here that already shows from I-40, and I'd like to submit this to the council. I want you to look at it and see what everybody coming into Cookville, Tennessee will see, plus how much larger they are now than when you was out at the house. And they're a lot larger now, and I'd like for all of you to see this. I will have to say that the quarry, since limestone came in, the blasting is a big thump at our house. What it is to everybody else, I don't know, but I know we don't notice it that much. But I'm worried about the runoff and the view if we ever do sell our property, which we don't have any intentions of selling it right now. But I got a call the other night wanting to pay for us to have our land zone CL. They wanted that bad, and that's to keep them from having to put up the barrier.
Well, Ms. Judd, I, you know, I appreciate your comments and I, and the photograph as well. I can, I'm not sure what exactly I was stating other, as far as the expansion of the quarry, other than that maybe they couldn't expand beyond their current boundaries at that time, because they were, that, that piece of property, and I'm not even, I'm not sure when that was, but I'm sorry for any, you know, confusion or misunderstanding there. And, and I can assure you that as someone who has a very fine appreciation of, of nature and aesthetic values, I wish that the quarry wasn't there. I, I do notice it when I drive down the interstate, and I wish that it were, I wish it was still farm.
I have a little more I'd like to say. Ms. Jean Davis talked about the quarry was there from years ago. Grandpa Holdiston owned the farm that joined the Martin Farm. McCormick's didn't own it at the time. They bought it from the Martin family. The quarry started after McCormick's bought it. We got farm from Grandpa Holdiston, so the farm was there before the quarry McCormick segment owned the property.
And it's, when we talk about runoff, and I, I wish that, I think Brian Paddock had to leave, but he does know quite a bit about environmental law, and I would feel certain to say that the state and/or the federal government will be regulating anything that runs off of that piece of property.
And within our zoning requirements, there are screening and buffer requirements, as there are on all zoning, but there are within that too. Is that correct, Mr. Mills?
For grandfathered use.
Yeah, and that's a good point. If this is rezoned, any new use, any change in use in compliance with the code has to meet all the requirements of the code. They're not grandfathered in. So, any, for example, asphalt plant has to meet the screening, buffering, setback requirements, and then any other applicable requirements in the zoning code, and that includes handling your stormwater and on your drainage, that's all applicable to this, to any new use.
I don't want to put this in these simplistic terms, but I don't know how else to say what I'm thinking. The rock is there. Nobody put it there. Nobody, it, it was there by nature, and it began to be quarried before Cookville is where it is now. And I know that that makes it difficult for the residents in that area, but I don't know how you deal with it. The rock is there, and you can't go to another place and quarry unless you have rock there. And I know that is very simplistic, and when I was talking about the, the houses, I was talking about the houses north of the quarry. I wasn't talking about the folks south of it.
My name is Brenda York. My mom and dad's property. She's the one I tried to call my dad. Located here, comes back up and joins quarry up here on this end. I have, there's a couple of people that want me to speak for them. One of them being, if you want me to speak for you, raise your hand. Several. This is really, so I've got a few minutes that I have, some things I want to present. I went to the ASCS office, or the building that's behind the, where the ASCS office is at, Scotts, there's a federal office in there, I'm not sure of it, but they got me a copy of a photo dated in 1980. That was the last one that they could get. That shows the size of the quarry, and that's the size of the quarry when it was grandfathered in. This shows the current that can come from the tax assessor's office. You can see it's gotten larger since it was grandfathered in. I also went and done the research from the county assessor's office, and I contend that the quarry is operating illegally, that they were out of service for over 30 months. The, at the time they were grandfathered in, the county had this property leased. In 2001, this property... In 2001, this property was changed, 20 acres, and it was changed from farmland, on here it's showing, 2001, nonproductive, 20 acres, commercial. 2002, 20 acres, nonproductive, 20 acres, commercial. 2003, nonproductive, 20 acres. 2004, nonproductive, 20 acres, commercial property. 2005, nonproductive, 20 acres. That was what the original quarry was leased from. Then it changed, because 12, 23, and 4, that's when Cookeville Limestone purchased this. That property was appraised at 20 acres at $1,000, $50 an acre. In a conversation with our mayor, talking about this, was told also by the Jim Shipley, not Jim Shipley, James Mills, that they had 71 and a half acres. What I contend is that they don't. They purchased all this because the other property that was around there was in the green belt. It was the 51-point-something acres that was bought, when this 20 acres was also bought. I've been to every county office, no one, absolutely no one, can provide me with a lease that the county, apparently it was a verbal agreement, but Mr. McCormick and his family were being paid so much per ton. In 2001, 2, 3, and 4, the state of Tennessee has no blasting records, they have no EPA records, they have no water pollution records. To me, that tells me that they were not only a non-conforming use, but they were not in use. The rock was being hauled in, and it came out in one of our planning commission meetings that we had. The rock was even hauled in and purchased by the county from Highways Incorporated and Allgood and hauled in up there. They were not blasting, they were not crushing. How can you consider that a quarry that is in use when they have none of the permits that is required by the state, which is required to this day, none of the other things that the regulations and stuff says they have to have? I contend they were not in use. The 20 acres is what the quarry was sitting on. In the QM zone, you have to have at least 50 acres to be considered. The other thing I want to bring up, and I've got a paper here, I don't think T-Dot will ever approve this. The first thing, the letter, Mr. Mills, if you could bring that back up, the letter that comes from T-Dot, and I think all of y'all from, that was sent a copy of this, this was presented to the planning meeting, this is not the letter that was presented to the planning meeting. The letter that was presented to the planning meeting was dated different. It was dated, and we had an email from the guy that makes the decisions from T-Dot, a Mr. Pascal, hold on just a second, that states, and also from an Alan Wolfe, no one has, and this was on July the 20th, no one has contacted us regarding a traffic signal or study on Highway 70 near I-40. Then all of a sudden, when we get to the meeting, the planning commission, when they were voting on this last, the letter that was presented had Richard Howell, James Gentry, and Glenn Pascal's name on it. After a phone call was made, Glenn Pascal and Richard Howell both said they knew nothing of this letter, they had not approved for their names to be used on this letter. And today, this letter, if you'll notice, is dated July the 22nd. This letter right here is the one that was originally presented to the planning commission. This is the next letter that went, and now we have a third one, the one that was, that was sent to you all, it's dated the 20th, and now this one is the 22nd, which is it? You know, the other thing about the grandfathering clause is that these are some photos that I took. I have a little digital camera, welcome to Cookeville. This is what we are presenting to the people that come I-40, thousands, thousands a day. And we are, been in magazines and everything, that we're a retirement community, we have good schools, we have good this, good that, but this is what they're seeing when they come from the east I-40 going west. These are some pictures here coming down 70, or east spring, going towards I-40. You can't, T-Dot, are they gonna approve? There's been wrecks, upon top of wrecks, when you're trying to pull out from Dry Valley Road. In that letter, if you'll notice, it states that the line between you and the city, but that's not what it said in the first letter that was presented to the planning board. Also up here, this is Mr. Alan LaFever's car parked at his residence, and he's pretty close to the top, next to the quarry. You can see the top of the car, one blast, and there was a plume. Mr. Johnson even said it covered the nursery out there, just a big one, it was one blast. They wiped it off, and you can see here where that it wasn't wiped off, what that done. This right here is the windows, just one blast, and this is what we've all had to live with out there. They're pretending that they were there before anyone else. My father's property has been in the family since 1816, and I think next Wednesday at the Putnam County Fair, he's gonna be getting another award for it being a century farm. This is farmland out there. Everything that you have, if you'll put them out back up.
There are.
Yes, please. Everything around is RS-20. Why would you want to put this and change it? Because they were grandfathered in at this. If you change this and change the grandfathering, which that's in a sense what you're doing by changing this to QM, you're allowing them to not only get bigger, as they have already done, which I'm saying this right here is what they had, but this is what they already went and done. And we have to, we cannot look out of our carport. Ms. Mahannon that lives right here, I have a picture that I took off of hers, and I couldn't get it developed fast enough to have it here, all she sees is this dirt. Okay? You change it to QM, who's gonna make them put this all up where we don't have to do this? I know the coast department has a thing, but if they don't, are we gonna have to take our money, our hard-earned money, and sue them to get them to do this? It shouldn't come to that. It shouldn't have to come to that, because right now as it stands, yes, they can quarry here, but don't put an asphalt plant in there that forever that footprint is left on that ground. Sam, in talking with you on the phone, you said to me, well, you can't build, grow a garden up there. Well, I beg to differ. This right here, right now, is nothing but rock, and as you can see from that picture, and dirt. That's all it takes. I've picked up too many rocks to know that you can grow a garden up there. There might be a hole up there, but you can grow a garden. But once you put this asphalt plant and the cement plant in up there, that footprint, and that's one of the things that people are talking about now, is the footprint that we're leaving for our future generations. My grandchildren, I have grandchildren, and this right here is gonna leave a footprint. What do you think asphalt is made of? It's made from a petroleum product, tar. And once that gets in the ground, you ain't gonna get it out. The other thing is it says that we're, they're supposed to have a reclamation plan, where has that been said in anything? I've not seen anything about that. The other thing, I just want to read this, it come out of the free encyclopedia about the grandfathering in, that the, it is a, it's an old rule to continue to apply to some existing situations when a new rule will apply to all future situations. It means to grant such an exemption, an exemption being the quarry was there, it was not the size when it was grandfathered in that it is now. It is bigger, larger. The exemption is limited, it may extend to a set period of time, or it may be lost once a change is made. And that's what I'm saying, contending, that once you change this zoning on this, you're changing that grandfathering in. It won't be where that you can stop it anymore. As my mother stated, she got a call the other night, already wanting to rezon their properties at CL. It's a drastic deviation from the future land use plan. Now, on the future land use plan, that is currently before the planning commission and holding public things on, all of this surrounding here, they want to change it to mixed industrial slash commercial. And we have a right as citizens to come and say no. Well, we want ours zoned to stay what it is. That is farmland. And some of y'all may not understand, but when you've worked on a working farm that has had beef cattle operation, corn, tobacco, and worked on rock, and when I say rock, in 1962 Hoover, Hoover Construction or Hoover Limestone came and drilled on my father's property, said that there was 50 years of limestone. This right here is your exit ramp, all of this right here is nothing but a solid wall. 50 years of limestone. You know what my dad said? No. We picked up rock, me and my sister, and my family had picked up rock over all of this, and my mom and dad had made a, a good living. But when you let this right here, and the, and one of the pictures that I have, this here is from my dad's farm. This here is from the road on my dad's, going out to my dad's farm.
These are current pictures?
Yes.
Okay.
This is another one from I-40. All of these things, I contend, I feel that they're operating illegally, the city of Cookeville is not enforced, they were nonconforming. Nonconforming use of land shall be, it's in the nonconform, the 2.1 dot 8B, no nonconforming use of land shall be enlarged, or increased, or extended to occupy a greater area of land than was operated, than was occupied at the effective date of adoption or amendment There's health issues. There's trust issues. There's safety issues. A deviation from the future land use plan. The footprint, the footprint that's gonna be left on that land up there, it's nonconforming land right now. It is regulated, no matter if you change this to QM, it's still regulated by the state. It's regulated by the state now. Why would you want to change it? Why not leave it as it's nonconforming, they can't get any larger, they can't put a cement plant up there, they can't put an asphalt plant up there? And this is what I'm saying, they don't have their 50 acres. Look at the tax records. Either the tax records are wrong, or something else is not right. I just cannot stress, a comment was made to my sister. Yes, we have been concerned about this. I've lost a lot of sleep over it, because I love the land. I've grown, was born in this county, Putnam County, went to the schools here, and I still work here. And to see something like this within the city limits, when within a half a mile there is LoJack that has a quarry, that has an asphalt, that has a cement, but the thing about that, there are no land, there's no houses around it, well, maybe one, brusses, up on the top of the hill where their quarry is at. But there across the interstate, there's no cattle grazing around it, and then you've got another one in Allgood. Why do we need, can Putnam County support 3? I'm not against people making, you know, having a business and making it, but not on the backs of the citizens. And that's what, we feel like that it's doing to us. I mean, we have put, since I was five years old, and I'm 53, we have put up, but the thing, one of the things that was brought up in the planning thing is that when the county had this, and the county had it leased for years and years, you might get a blast a month at the most. You might get 14 or 15 trucks going out of there at the most a day. Mr. Johnson can attest to that, too. But now that Cookeville Limestone is taking it over, not that I have anything against Cookeville Limestone, but it's the, there's 100 to 150 trucks a day. Okay, why not go ahead and have them? Lease, deny the QM. Let them go ahead and build their road coming out over here, if T-Dot approves it. Like Ms. Davis said, there's a lot of ifs, a lot of things that this company is gonna have to do, but I still say zoning this right here, QM, just to be zoning it, QM, because it may fit, is wrong, because everything that's done up there now is regulated by the state. But one thing, that when you start digging into this and researching it, who turns in their, their water runoff stuff, their air pollution stuff? Who does those samples? Guess what we found out when we were doing the research on it? They did. The state doesn't come out and do it, they do it and send it in. What does that say? If I'm a dog wanting to get in the hen house, I'd be wanting to do it myself, too. I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, I'm just saying, no matter if you change this or not, it's still regulated by the state. And I urge you to vote no for this, and yes for this.
Thank you, Mrs. Jorg, appreciate your comments. Do we have any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir, if you'd just come and identify yourself at the lectern and we'll give you up to three minutes or...
My name is John Beller, and I married into the Huddleston land relationship. There's been a lot of discussion, and I don't know just where you looked on the internet, but if you look on the internet, you can find so much stuff opposed to concrete plants and asphalt plants, not only in this state, but all over the country. I will leave you with this, but I want to read some things because there's a lot going on here. Asphalt fumes are known toxins, and I'll just give you some of the things that are in the asphalt processing plants, produces roofing materials, major sources of hazardous air pollutants such as formaldehyde, exine, phenol, organic methanol, and so on and so forth. Health impacts and loss of property value. The door-to-door health survey found 45% of the residents living within a half mile of a plant reported deterioration in health which began after the plant opened. I think we have a retirement community just up over the hill, don't we? I think we want to be known for putting an asphalt plant just a mile away from the retirement community. The most frequent health problems cited were high blood pressure, not that there's none in this room now, high headaches, shortness of breath. I think the other thing I want to point out, because I've heard, what I've heard in the panel here is all you know about asphalt plants is what you've just about heard tonight. I will give you the benefit of knowing that I worked in a plant that developed coal and tar and worked, made carbon rods for steel plants. So we were working with a lot of the same issues every day, and I was just an engineer in the plant, so I'd leave my nice shiny office and I'd go into this 400-acre, five buildings, mixing coal, pitch, tar, and everything. And no matter how well that's regulated, when you're standing next to the coal and pitch and tar, every day you come out of that environment, that black soot is all over the cars, it's all over the buildings, and it goes for miles. So don't kid yourself thinking that the EPA is gonna keep an eye on that. We don't have to look too far south to see how well the EPA and the government have managed down in the Gulf of Mexico. And when you're finally making your decisions, this is... And when you're finally making your decisions, this is what it should be based on. For those of you who are struggling, exercise democracy. Federal regulations are based on acceptable risk, modeling self-regulating. Put safety first. Even if an asphalt plant meets all state and federal pollution standards, people living nearby are still exposed to cancer-causing substances. These standards are based on principle of acceptable risk. So you should know a lot more about what you're willing to casually accept. Precautionary decisions place the highest priority on protecting the health and environment and develop cleaner technologies. Industry and government have a responsibility to thoroughly study for harm from a new chemical or new technology before it's used, rather than assume it's harmless until proven otherwise. Choose the safest solution. Decision-making by government, industry, and individuals must include evaluation of alternatives and choose the safest technically feasible solutions. Government-industry decisions should be based on meaningful citizen input and mutual respect for the golden rule with the highest regard for those whose health and affected for our irreplaceable natural resources, not for those with financial interests.
Thank you, Mrs. Beller.
I think we all took the pledge of allegiance, so I think we want to make sure we do it a little quick. And I can make tiny copies if these are available on the internet.
Thank you.
Bring the basketball party.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beller. Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am.
This will be short. My name is Dot LaFever, and I live at 1274 Skyline Drive. My property borders the property of the quarry, which is owned by Coopla Limestone Company. All right. Opinions do not matter, and I don't have the law numbers as some of my friends here do. However, the law does state that no one on their property is allowed to do anything that would cause damage to another person's property. On our property, we've had our home completely, well, it's destroyed until it cannot be repaired. That's minor. But this is what's happening. In my opinion, the law's been broken on a daily basis. It also, the law states that no one on their property can do anything that causes damage to your health. This also's been doing, it's been done because my husband's on oxygen. It's really hard for him to breathe. And we call for ice burn, all of this, I've said over and over to deaf ears. And the last thing is that we know you all are law-abiding citizens, but possibly you could put something in place, an ordinance of a city, that could control this, because you've taken in all of this with no way to control it except regulations. And the law always supersedes regulation. We know that, and you all know it. And so what we are asking is that you will not put this, let this QM rezoning pass, because even now, when we go out and in addition to what this gentleman just said, we could go out in the morning and wipe a damp cloth, I should have brought one tonight, I think you've all seen it anyway, on our car, there is soot, diesel oil, dust, and just, just one blast. And the horror of those blasts, no one knows. And as Jean Davis told me also back in 2006, when I was trying to get over this wall that has been placed in front of me, well, you knew the quarry was there when you built. That's not true. When we built up there, it was like a Garden of Eden. Maybe every once in a while you'd hear a blast, but nothing, nothing like it is now. And to pass this, you would be turning your backs on all, I'm not speaking for everybody, they have not said I could, but all the citizens and us in our community, just to please or to satisfy five people? I know you are above that, and it doesn't make sense that you would even consider doing this. And I just ask that you really think hard about it, because this is an immoral thing that would be happening.
Thank you. Any further comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. If you'd just come to the lectern and identify yourself, please.
I'm Judy Butler. I live at 925 Skyline Drive. It is in my front yard instead of my backyard. Calvary Road coincides with my Skyline Drive. You're seeing regulations and rules. Where have those been since 2004? There are trucks flying down the road. They're not covered. There is no regulation on them. The blasting, there's been no regulation. There is no way that you could rock my house the way it rocks and be under regulations. And if they don't follow the rules now, what makes you think they'll follow them later? So I just ask you to consider us that are residents. And yes, I've been out there 25 years, and I know that the quarry was there. I was born and raised in Coopla, and I know it was there. But it's not right for them to subject us as residents and destroy our home and our property when there are rules and regulations to blasting and dust and those environmental things. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Charles. I live at 355 Woodson Chapel Road, about a mile north of this site. And I've worked and been to a number of meetings with these people, listening to some of their problems. And I feel really sorry for their situation. They're in a no-win situation here. And unfortunately, you all are getting ready to make insult to injury here. You're getting ready to allow a company to increase the pollution and more damage to their houses, and you're just going to let them do it. And it makes absolutely no sense to do that. You all should not vote the QM. And the CL makes sense in that maybe that road would be a safer road for them to use. But definitely do not allow them the QM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Yes, sir.
My name is Angelo Volpe. I'm a member of the Planning Commission. I'd just like to make two quick points. First, I want to commend the council persons who went online and looked at the effects of an asphalt plant. And with all due respect to the Environmental Protection Agency, my background is in chemistry. I don't believe that you can get around the deleterious effect of an asphalt plant being put in that area. And that was one of the rationales that went into the Planning Commission unanimously approving the CL zoning, but unanimously rejecting the QM zoning. And I would urge the city council to take into account that your duly-appointed members of the Planning Commission unanimously voted to reject the QM zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volpe. Any additional comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. My name's Doug Hudgens, 1250 Skyline Drive. Just a point I hope you'll be aware of is that you go back to about 2000, 2002, that quarry was small. We didn't know that it was operating. It wasn't an impact on our life. Now, today, you know, the size of that operation is five times what it was. And, you know, we hear things going on constantly, dust coming over on our property. And one of the concerns I have is I don't know if I choose to sell my house. I don't know how I can. I mean, it's done that much damage to property values on that whole northern face of that hill. And so what you're getting ready to do, it sounds like, is make the situation even worse and put us behind the eight ball even more. So I would hope that you would vote against this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudgens. Any further comments? This is, this is a tough issue. It really is. And we've had some good comments tonight, and I realize that it is, it is one of those decisions that you, that are presented to the council that does affect people's lives and, and really, anytime zoning comes into effect. And I spent four years on the Planning Commission, served with Dr. Volpe, and have a lot of respect for his opinions. And I know Councilman Williams has a completely new respect for the Planning Commission after four years as well. It is a tough job. And as I said earlier, I think that this, this vote for me tonight is about the future of that area, and the people who will live there five, 10, 20 years down the road will have a better understanding of what's going on out there. And under no circumstances, and I have not always agreed with the people on this, on this council on every issue, but I can say with utmost certainty that none of us would do anything to hurt anybody in this community or the quality of life. And it was alluded to earlier, I'm not sure, I can't remember here or find it in my notes, that, that we would do this for one group of people or one person for money. And that, that couldn't be further from the truth. This, I'm not even, I don't even look at who, you have to remove yourself somewhat emotionally from these types of decisions and look at them in a more rational and logical way. And it, it makes no difference to me who owns that piece of property or, I couldn't, because that would be plain political favoritism. I've known the Judd family my entire life. And I would, you know, it, I can't, you can't do things for one person. That's plain, you know, favoritism to those people or that person. It has to be about the common good for all, for the majority of people. And I think, I think that's how I'm going to have to vote tonight, is to satisfy the, the long-range goals of the city and, and dealing with that issue out there of having that mine already in the ground. And I hear from a lot of the residents about the blasting, and there, there is nothing that we can do about that. Every, every conversation I've had with a resident out there, it always drifts back into the blasting. And that, that's not what this is about. That site has already, to a certain degree, been environmentally damaged from the mine. It is a mine. And as the gentleman, Mr. Beller, alluded to, anytime you have a mining operation, there's going to be issues that go along with that. And to me, if you have an area that has already been damaged like that, why would you want to go to somebody else's neighborhood, another farm further out, and damage yet another area? You know, when even the president talked about the mountaintop removal, which I'm vehemently opposed in, in West Virginia for coal mining, it just seems very destructive to me. But he granted some permits for them to go out and continue doing that in an area only because the area was already environmentally damaged. And in my opinion, this area has some environmental damage to it. And it's, it's a, as I said earlier, it is, it's there. It, it's a truism. There, there's a gigantic hole in the ground over there, and we can't, we can't do anything about that. The things that we can do things about, as Vice Mayor said, we had a lot of complaints about the traffic and the safety of trucks coming out of Old Calvary Road. And this rezoning potentially can address some of those concerns. The state and other government agencies will continue to regulate a lot of the activities that occur on that, that site out there. And when you have problems like the car damaged, the photographs that Ms. York showed, I certainly hope that whoever damaged that, and I think that it was alluded to, that it was the mine, the quarry, and I would think that it probably was, that they took responsibility for it. And if they don't, then I think there's a, there's recourse to be had. Any further comments by the council?
I think as a, as a member of the Planning Commission, you know, I serve a dual role. I have to look at things as a Planning Commission member as it relates to planning. And then as a city councilman, there's a lot of other things involved as it relates to the issue. I think one of the things we haven't talked enough about, some of the things that concerned us, when we looked at redoing the zone, and we generated or created this new zone, quarry mining zone, it was based upon looking at this site. There were issues that we had at the time. One of the issues was traffic. And the traffic is a huge public safety issue. There are a lot, as everyone agrees, there's more truck traffic there today than there were before. But we, as we've said, all alluded to before, there's no way for us to control that. But what we can control is public safety. I think one of the things as we look at this, you know, these trucks are coming into town back and forth, not just from Old Calvary Road. I mean, these, these trucks are coming into our downtown areas and back there. As we look at, as a Planning Commission and a city councilman, as I look at the idea of if this study is approved and this light happens, then we're going to be able to look at this property. And honestly, I feel like that the, the, the public safety can be improved because of this new location for this entrance. I think as you look at the quarry mining site, that was one of the issues. The other issue was before they asked for heavy manufacturing, and we didn't want all those uses. And so we changed it at that point. And so I feel like that when I look at this site, that the public safety issue here drives this for me. It's very difficult. Not to mention, you know, one of the comments was made is that there's a possibility that we can relocate the downtown concrete plant to this site. If that could be done, there would be a lot more traffic off of our downtown city streets. We wouldn't have sand in our streets or stormwater, because that's another grandfathered use. But I really, I really feel like that the public safety is the main thing that, that helps here. And, and I spoke with Ms. York about that. I mean, having to go through the trauma of being hit by a truck herself, a younger lady, the, it's, that concerns me as a city councilman. Public safety is, is very important to me. And so I feel like that this new location can really deal with a lot of the concerns that we have there as far as truck traffic is concerned.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen no further comments. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Now to the hearing of citizens and their delegations, and we have had quite a bit of deliberation tonight with the, but at this time, we do open up our meeting to the public to come and speak for up to three minutes about issues and concerns that you might have. And while you're making your way up, I'll now open up the floor to the council. If you have any comments, I think, what time do the polls close?
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. So I hope that you all voted, I hope that you all voted before you came to the meeting tonight.
I'd like to take some time to thank you to the Herald Citizen for putting an ad and, or putting a article in the paper about the After Dark series of events that Abby and I put on every year as a fundraiser for our downtown park tomorrow night at Dogwood Park, just after 8:00 at dark. We're showing a movie in the park, a 35-inch inflatable screen, HD projector, and we're showing the largest grossing film of all times, Avatar. It is edited for children, so no worries about language there as well. And then on Saturday, we're having the After Dark Race for the park, a kids' one-mile fun run, and an 8K run. So we're really excited about those things. We'd like to encourage you to come out and participate in those events.
Very good.
I'd like to compliment Mr. Brown and Public Works for upgrading Fourth Street. That Fourth Street has been in need of repair for a while, and this past winter has really caused it to be even worse. So if you'll take a moment to drive down Fourth Street, you'll see how much improvement we have had. And of course, that's just the beginning of some, upgrading of some streets with monies that we now appropriated for, for such.
We still ran out of money.
Still.
All right. Any further comments by the council? I wonder what the polls are doing.
I'm sure they're counting or doing whatever they do, but it's the, at least the city council signs will be taken up off of the streets, and that will be one less pollutant on the face of Cookville. And I was one of those participants, too. It's kind of a necessary evil when you run for political office.
I'd like to ask a question about, I think one year we had a dumpster somewhere that we could...
Oh, yeah.
Bring a lot of...
We still do that.
We'll do that. Will it be located in...
Behind City Hall.
Behind City Hall?
Okay.
Okay, good. Let's, let's encourage everybody to pick up...
I'd have to get two or three dumpsters.
Could we, could we sort aluminum in one? And that would be really nice.
Mine are cardboard. Mine are recyclable.
Yeah, but you're, but you're, what do you call it? The aluminum.
Metal parts? No, it's not aluminum, because they're rusting.
Oh.
I must have gotten the cheap ones.
I'd have to applaud Councilwoman Anderson. You have, you have reused signs from your first...
Yes, I did.
Very good.
Cheap.
All right. Seen no further comments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.